I will call the Cookeville City Council meeting for Thursday, August 1st to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Baji.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
Mayor Wheaton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eldridge.
Here.
Councilman Gilbert.
Here.
Five present.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Seacaster Randall Rittenberry from Living Hope Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Move our heads, please. Father, we come to you tonight, today in the name of Jesus. We're just so thankful to you, first and foremost, for your goodness, your love, your compassion, and your mercy. Father, pray for the leaders and officials of the city, county, and state that they would act with godly counsel, Father, in all that they do. And Father, pray for this meeting tonight and these city council members. Your word says that we can ask for wisdom and she'll give it to us liberally, that she won't criticize us for it, Father. So we ask for wisdom tonight, Father, as they consider the agenda before them, Father, that they would act in godly counsel and wisdom for the benefit of your people. We thank you for it in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father and the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God in every form. Thank you, Pastor Rittenberry. Item three, consider approval of a justice presented. Are there any changes?
Motion, Mayor.
I have a motion.
The move.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mbachi. Any discussion from the council? We will vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Item five A, on business, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on July 18th, 2024. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilman Baji, seconded by Councilman Gilbert. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Go ahead and take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. On the consent agenda, six A, set a date, nine, five, twenty-four for a public hearing on ordinance O twenty-four, zero, eight, two, one, rezoning property located at Neal Street, South Maple Avenue, and Old Walton Road, tax map sixty-six, parcel thirty-two point zero eight, thirty-two point one-one, and a portion of parcel thirty-two point zero zero from CR Regional Commercial and RS fifteen, single-family residential to CG General Commercial. Six B, set a date, nine, five, twenty-four for a public hearing on ordinance O twenty-four, zero, eight, twenty-two, amendments to the zoning code relative to defining truck stops, automobile and truck fuel centers, and gasoline and motor fuel retail, until our automobile and truck fuel centers in the CI. Commercial industrial mixed-use zoning is used permitted by right. Six C, consider approval of pricing adjustment on transformer bids approved by the city council on seven, six, twenty-three. Six D, consider approval of pricing adjustment on transformer bid approved by the city council on nine, seven, twenty-three. Six E, consider awarding bids for four O triple X U R D wire. Six F, consider awarding bid for LED lights. Six G, consider awarding bid for steel poles. Six H, consider awarding bid for one hundred secondary junction boxes. Six I, consider awarding bid for forty-eight, thirty-seven point five KVA pad transformers. Six J, consider awarding bid for forty-eight, fifty KVA pad transformers. Six K, consider awarding bid for twenty-four, seventy-five KVA pad transformers. Six L, consider awarding bid for twelve, fifty KVA con transformers, and six M, consider approval of authori- approval and authorize the city manager to execute a grant of easement for East Tennessee Natural Gas. Do I have a motion on that consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the council? Okay, we'll vote on the consent agenda.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven A, consider approval to authorize the city manager to execute a temporary access agreement with Cracker Barrel for construction of the Gateway Monument sign at South Jefferson Avenue and Interstate forty, Mr. Mills.
Mayor, council members, as you're aware, we have entered into a contract for the construction of Gateway or Welcome Signs, as you said, at South Jefferson and South Willow and I forty. To minimize traffic conflicts and to provide easier access to the location of the sign on South Jefferson Avenue, Cracker Barrel, Old Country Store Incorporated has agreed to grant to the city a temporary construction easement on their property located at twelve ninety-five South Willow Avenue. I believe there's a map that goes with this too, Rick. The easement would be for a period of six months, and the city would be required to restore the property to the same or similar condition that it is currently in. So this would make it much easier for the contractor to get to the location, and this location's right off the ramp, which it's low traffic there, and it's been much safer for them. We very much appreciate Cracker Barrel granting this easement, and I also want to acknowledge the time and effort of John Lord, our community development director, that he put in to obtain this easement, and I would request the council authorize me to execute the agreement.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public on this agenda item? Discussion from council? Thanks. Go ahead and take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven B, consider authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with Kimberly Horn for the final design and bid specifications for the Kane Creek Park Expansion Project. Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Somebody gave me this and told me to run the slideshow, and I forgot that there are two buttons. There's forward and backwards. I keep hitting the wrong one, so sorry about that. So this is, we're finally at the point where we can do our final design of the project at Kane Creek Park, the expansion project. We received a grant, five hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollar grant, LPRF grant from the state of Tennessee. That is a fifty-fifty match, so it's an over one point one-two-five million dollar project. The project includes new parking, picnic, pavilion restrooms, and over a mile of park trick, paved trail. We do need final plans and construction drawings, stamp construction drawings for the satisfaction of the grant. Kimberly Horn has extensive experience with park planning and design and LPRF grant management. This proposal includes construction plans, bid services permitting, project management, and grant administration, and the fee for the service is a hundred thousand, hundred and one thousand, five hundred dollars, and the project will be ready to bid by the end of the year. There's a map of the preliminary, conceptual map of what we would be doing there at the park and that thirty-one acres that we purchased a while back. We're really excited about, that's the photograph of the location, another photograph, an aerial photograph of that. It's beautiful land. We look forward to getting this project, and I would request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Walker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mbachi. Any discussion from the public on this item? Discussion from council?
I think it's important to point out, we're kind of getting the car, getting settled car and drive away with the money here. We, the idea that you've got worked and got us this grant and the property itself, the real estate gets to stand for some of our pledge, and we get this thing almost fifty cents on the dollar, you're to be commended. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe? Anybody else?
Good work, Greg. Thank you.
All right, we'll vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven C, consider approval of an amendment to the contracts with Kimberly Horn for the CPAC and Dogwood Park Expansion Project. Mr. Woods.
Council members, as you know, we have a contract with Kimberly Horn currently that we're in the design phase of the expansion of improvements of the Performing Arts Center, specifically the restrooms, the public restrooms at the Performing Arts Center, and also a new entrance into Dogwood Park from Walnut Avenue. We're, as we looked at that project and, and working on the design, we realized that we have a structural issue with a failing wall that is on the east side of the Performing Arts Center that needs to be replaced. So we looked at, went back to Kimberly Horn and said, that was not in the scope of their project originally in their contract. So we went back to them and asked what that would cost to fix that. We also looked at possibly adding an elevator there, a freestanding outdoor elevator there that would enable people to go from and deliveries to go from the parking lot that is used now for leisure services offices up to the patio area outside the entry of CPAC. They came back to us with a thirty-seven thousand dollar amendment to the, to the contract to do that work. After our meeting on Monday, the work session meeting, we talked about possibly eliminating that elevator aspect, excuse me, and I went back to them and asked what it would cost just to fix the wall and not do the elevator. They came back to me and said, twenty-five thousand dollars, an amendment of twenty-five thousand dollars would cover just the wall work, the structural work to secure the wall and rebuild the wall and eliminate the design on the elevator. Just a point of, just to point out that we were going to, the plan was to bid, bid the elevator as an alternate because we didn't know what that might come in. So we were going to bid that as an alternate. So if it did come in way over budget, it was going to be way too expensive. We could take that out anyway. But they came back with a twenty-five thousand dollar price on the amendment, and that's where we stand tonight.
Thank you. Is there a motion? We can, we can have, we can discuss.
What are we motioning on?
So we can, we can go ahead and motion on this item, and then we can discuss an amendment, amendment, correct?
Yeah.
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
All right, so I've got a motion. Do you have a second from Councilman Walker? Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, whoops, excuse me, second from Vice Mayor Eldridge, and now we'll open up the discussion that we've had regarding the price.
It feels high, just to do the retaining wall. I mean, we obligated to use them if we've got local civil guys that can do this and probably do it more competitively.
Well, I don't know, we're certainly not obligated to, if this is outside the scope, we could, we could do something different with a different, different designer, different contractor, or different structural engineer. I don't know that, I mean, that would have to work hand in hand with the bidding that we do with, on this project itself, because it would need to come in on the same timeline.
So I think some of the discussion we had, like you said, the price was a little high, and so we would like to see if we could possibly negotiate it down to around not to exceed fifteen thousand.
I think fifteen grand.
And if that's not possible, maybe then we can have the discussion of, do we go with someone else?
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll accept a motion to amend this for the city manager to negotiate for not to exceed price of fifteen thousand for the amendment to the contract.
Who are we negotiating with, Kimberly Horn or AEI?
Well, Kimberly Horn is the contractor, AEI is the sub doing the architectural and engineering work on the structure itself.
Okay.
So we have a contract with Kimberly Horn.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we, we would amend it for Mr. Mills to negotiate with them for a price not to exceed fifteen thousand.
I'll second.
And it'd be the best looking wall in town.
So we have, I made the motion, I'll second it, and that is to amend it for Mr. Mills to negotiate not to exceed fifteen thousand. Does that save it, to get that off?
Yeah, maybe when, when you're, when that's happening, if we get some idea of what their repair plan is, you know, is they gonna take the whole wall down? We just gonna pour buttresses, or what their plan is, just broad strokes?
All right, so motion, second. Any more discussion? All right, go ahead and take a vote on that for the item as amended.
I'll push it.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven D, consider approval for change order not to exceed seventy thousand dollars for construction of the Kane Creek Substation Improvement Project, approved by the city council on eleven seventeen twenty-two. Mr. Haney.
Mayor and council members, we have an existing contract for improvements to Hurricane Creek Substation with Groves Electrical Services for two million eighty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. We've identified some additional work that we need to get completed that's outside that original scope, that's in the contract. So I'm asking for your approval to, approval to do change orders not to exceed seventy thousand dollars to do that additional work, and I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
A move.
Motion made by Councilman Mbachi. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public on this agenda item? Discussion from council? Okay, we'll vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Six E, hold a public hea- no, excuse, yeah, six E, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance O twenty-four, zero, eight, twenty, amend the Cookeville Municipal Code Title Eight, alcoholic beverages, by inserting a new chapter five to be entitled Consumption of Alcoholic Beverages on Public Properties and Public Streets. Do I have a motion on this agenda item? Okay.
So moved.
Okay, and do we have a second? I will second the agenda item. So now we will open up the public hearing portion for this meeting. Is, oh, yeah.
Would we like Mr. Mills to present first?
No, I'm just gonna skip over him. Sorry, yes. I'm trying, look, look at me, I'm just, I know.
Trying to get to a football game.
Yes, Mr. Mills, will you tell us what we are discussing? I know.
We're motioning.
Oh, sorry.
All right. So, Mayor, council members, in January of this year.
Sorry, it hits the end of summer. I don't know what's going on anymore.
The council established a committee of private citizens for the purpose of developing the process and procedure for permitting events with alcohol on public property, including city streets, without the requirement that such events be sponsored by the city. This action was taken in conjunction with the adoption of ordinance twenty-three, twelve, twenty-five. Prior to the adoption of this ordinance, the consumption of alcohol on public properties and streets was only allowed for city-sponsored events at locations designated by the city and for permitted nonprofit events at Dogwood Park. Ordinance twenty-three, twelve, twenty-five amended the municipal code to no longer allow events with alcohol in Dogwood Park except in events conceived and produced by the city, and to delete any city-sponsored event. So in essence, after the adoption of that ordinance, the only place you could consume alcohol on public property was in Dogwood Park for city-conceived and produced events. Now, the committee, and I would like to thank each of those personally, and I see some are here, consisted of Alma Anderson, Anna Dunn, Jay Albright, Jill Horner, and Laurel Wolf Woodford. They spent many, many hours on this committee, and after several meetings over many months, they have submitted for your consideration ordinance number twenty-four, eight, twenty, which creates a new chapter in Title Eight of the Municipal Code, establishing a process and procedure for allowing events with alcohol on certain public properties and certain streets. The key provisions of the ordinance, and Rick, there are several slides that highlight some of these. Under this new proposed ordinance, special events, or events with, on the street involving alcohol on public property would require a special event alcohol beverage permit. Only verifiable nonprofits would be eligible for a permit. Permits can only be granted for specific locations which are identified in the proposed ordinance. All property owners of businesses along the street closed for such an event would have to be notified. The permits are issued by the city clerk. There's a hundred dollar processing fee. The application to receive a special event permit, alcohol beverage permit, has to be submitted sixty days a minimum prior to the event. You have to provide a schedule for closing and opening the streets, the maximum number of tickets that could be sold for alcohol consumption. It may not exceed twenty-five hundred. So tickets are required for the events. Availability of private restaurants or portable pools must be verified. Libility insurance must be provided. The city clerk reviews the application and required information for completeness and accuracy. If it's not complete or accurate, then the applicant would have ten days to submit the corrected information to the city clerk. Non-glass containers only would be allowed. The portion of the street that would be closed had to be, has to be barricaded, and signage must be provided by the permit holder. However, sidewalks have to remain open, and access to businesses and residents may not be impeded. As I said, events have to be ticketed with arm or wristbands, and no cash sales are permitted. So again, you must have a ticket or a punch system to, for the consumption of alcohol. Ticket holders are limited in the amount of servings. I'll go said a little more in just a second. No alcohol can be served between ten AM or ten PM. Must have event security at a ratio of one to two-hundred-and-fifty per expected attendees. No street can be closed more than four times or a portion of street during the calendar year, and no more than once any calendar month for any event involving the consumption of alcohol. And lastly, organizations may be banned from future events for a minimum of two years, or even a permanent ban, maybe of service by the city manager due to the severity of the violation of an event. Now, the ordinance that was approved and recommended by the committee has been revised in two sections based on comments from the council at our work session. Section eight oh five point three has been amended to include the public parking lot on North Cedar Avenue contiguous with the Leslie Town Center as an authorized location for a special event for the consumption of alcoholic beverages. And section eight, five oh seven, has been revised from a limitation of no more than four alcoholic beverages per ticket holder to limiting ticket holders to no more than two servings of alcoholic beverage per hour, with a serving defined as twelve ounces of beer, five ounces of wine, or one point five ounces of liquor. So again, I want to express my appreciation to the committee members for their work on preparing this ordinance. Theirs was not an easy task, and as there are varying strong opinions on alcohol, and in particular on the consumption of alcohol on public property. The proposed ordinance would allow the consumption of alcohol for nonprofit events on a very limited public properties and streets, which I believe is what the council asked the committee to develop, and I would recommend for approval of this ordinance.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I almost didn't let you say all them. You did a wonderful job. I said, sorry. So, Mr. Mills has presented that. Now, do I have a motion to, on this amendment item, I mean, on this item to start the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, got a motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Second from Councilman Mbachi. Now, I will open up the public hearing portion of this meeting. Anyone who would like to speak, may come up to the podium. If you will give us your name, whether you live in the city or county, you do have a three-minute time limit, so when you hear the timer, please wrap up your comments. We'll ask that we be respectful of everyone, and we'll allow the comments to begin. So if anyone would like to come up, speak, either podium's fine.
Good afternoon. My name is Norris Skelly. I'm a longtime volunteer with Mothers Against Drunk Driving. And last time I spoke to this, I think I spoke to the committee, I had two concerns. One was addressed in section ten, dinner in eight, five oh seven, alcohol shall not be served to anyone under the age of twenty-one. That should go without saying, but we know we have to put specific things in writing. The other thing I talked about was limiting the number of drinks. Now, in section six, or item six, ticket holders shall be limited to no more than two servings of alcoholic beverages per hour. Now, I don't know how long these festivals, events are going to run, but let's say we have a six-hour event, and you have people can serve no more than two drinks per hour. So at the end of that six hours, you've got someone who has consumed, or some people have consumed, twelve alcoholic beverages. Would anyone in this room or on the council want to get into a vehicle with someone and ride through the streets of Cookeville after they have consumed twelve alcoholic drinks at that event? Or would you want that person driving through a residential area, maybe for them to get home, and your kids accidentally be out in the road? So it's a safety issue for me. I would like to see that two servings per hour with a limit, total limit of six. I think six drinks in six hours at an event should be plenty, but you're always going to have someone who is going to go to that limit. And impaired drivers endanger everyone, everyone they meet on the roadways. So that's the extent of my comments tonight. I appreciate you letting me have a voice.
Thank you.
Well, I want to clarify one thing, but I didn't go through every component of the ordinance, but we do have a provision in here that alcohol shall not be served to anyone displaying signs of intoxication. So that's, the servers are also, a trained server are trained to notice.
Has to have your everything charmed, yeah.
Dave Rowland, Liberty ID, Drive Valley Road, just inside city limits. I did a little research for the last, I guess, discussion with the committee. Chris Coons, correct me if I'm wrong, because he gave me the info, and, but I'm, I'll get close anyway. I asked how many beer permits we have in the city right now. I think what I'm getting written here is a hundred and thirty-five. Is that close?
Ballpark, yes.
Over a hundred and thirty somewhere. I recall fifty-two liquor by the drink.
Ballpark.
Ballpark. I think I'm right on the money with eight liquor stores.
Yes.
Question is, do we need more? Lived here all my life. Prior to nineteen seventy, you had to go outside of city limits to buy alcohol at all, if you bought it legally. Got to buy from a bootlegger, go Jackson County or Nashville, down seventy, get beer. Nineteen seventy-five, I worked in the very first convenience store, there were two seven-elevens, locally owned, one on Jefferson. Alcohol, I can just recall, seeing one guy came in every day, bought about ten corks, all you could do to get in and out of there. Fast forward to nineteen ninety-three, we had the restaurant referendum, which was liquor, liquor referendum. Prior to that, when seventy-two, they had the first liquor boat. It was sadly turned down by the citizens, but anyway, nineteen ninety-three, and no one would, would deny that, you know, that the restaurants have brought a lot of prosperity to Cookeville. But at that time, it was made very clear there'd be no liquor stores. And some of the defense I've heard from, to have liquor on the street is, we want to be more progressive. But the problem in this United States today is because we've took progression off the cliff. Another comment I've heard is that, well, in order to get the kind of people to locate here that we really want, whether it be executives or doctors or whatever else, we'd have to have these kind of things. But the people I'm talking to from California, Oregon, all these other places, northern states are not coming here because we're more, we're a little more progressive. They're coming here because, because we are conservative. I've got three little grandsons, aged five, two and a half, and six months. They live right next door to convenience store, Beer Cave, all kinds of illegal drugs that we call illegal right there in your face. So let's just bring the party to downtown Cookeville on the street. When it'll be Savannah, my son went to school in Savannah. Talk to him about that tonight. Nasty homeless people everywhere, New Orleans, even downtown Nashville, maybe sometimes on a special occasion, you might have liquor on the street, but you can't walk outside there with a drink in your hand. Back to nineteen ninety-three.
You got, yeah, you got to wrap up, yeah.
Okay. I had the first billboard where Interstate driving me South Jefferson, two, the two major liquor wholesalers, beer companies, Miller and Budweiser, were begging me for a billboard there. Made that decision. It was a hard one. It's cost me hundreds of thousand dollars for the last, for the last thirty years. I didn't want to see Budweiser Rowland, my two-year-old son, now he's thirty-five. Y'all with kids? Keep thinking about that.
Thank you.
I was privileged to serve on this committee, and that you all tasked us with the job of coming up with an alcohol ordinance, although I wasn't for an alcohol ordinance or for alcohol on streets. And I do have a lot of respect for the other four people who served on this committee, and for all of you. I know you're in an impossible situation here, because somebody's don't like what you decide. But here's the deal. And I think I've maybe contacted y'all about this too. This is really about vision. It's about who we are and who we're going to be in the future. And so while we deliberated for weeks and had lots of discussion about what this ordinance should look like, in the back of my head was... In the back of my head was. What's Cookeville going to look like? In a few years, when y'all are sitting in these seats and where we're not in the committee really hashing out, how do we keep people safe and do this? So once you open the door, you know, you really don't have any control of what happens beyond that. So I'm asking you to vote this down, even though I helped write it. From a personal standpoint, as a downtown business owner, there are lots of reasons. Business disruption, traffic, parking, all those things we looked at. Those are logistical things that in a condensed area where a lot of people do business and travel and are going to live. It can create chaos at times. And if you have an event at Dogwood Park and CPAC and the Chamber and, you know, an event on the street, where's everybody going to park? So those are the things. But really, I think it'll come down, it's about vision. So I'm hoping you'll keep us family friendly. I'm hoping for the future that we'll be able to look our children and grandchildren and I'd say, we've got a great community where everybody does well. And that's what we all want. We want a community where everybody can thrive. And so if we're going to err on the on the side of prevention, rather than encouraging something that could hurt people.
That's all. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Hook. I am on the pastoral staff at First United Pentecostal Church, age 75, South Walnut, across from the fairgrounds. I want to speak from experience of having pastored 46 years and pastoring in a very. In Wisconsin, I have pastored in Wisconsin 31 years before retiring to Cookeville six years ago. I love Cookeville, but I want to speak to the culture. Of what happens when you introduce alcohol in different venues and facets and ways. In 1989, when I went to Wisconsin to start a church. I went, the first minister alliance meeting I went to. Was a number of pastors there. And so one of the, of course, me being raised conservative and and so forth, I never heard. The terminology. So each church had major fundraisers. That I was unaware of at the time coming from the South. And so the prayer request of one of the ministers was was please pray it doesn't rain over the weekend. So our beer and liquor sales can rocket. And so I was astounded that they had made a quarter million dollars. Two years before, but because it rained, their beer and liquor sales were down by $100,000. So I understand Wisconsin's estate that they drank more beer than they do milk. But when you create a culture of where. The one of the reasons I moved to Cookeville is because my grandkids. I feel like my grandkids, this is a good environment my grandkids could be in. And so just the opportunities that it allows even nonprofits, that also includes churches. We're a 501(c)(3). We would never serve beer or alcohol. But there are some possibly churches that promote, where I came from promoted alcohol. And their carnival kind of thing that we're going to have the fair. And so they would be selling, that was their major revenue. And so I am concerned of as a 501(c)(3), a nonprofit, being able to sell. And that encompasses churches as well, if they so choose to, which some do not have a standard or a. They don't have any stance against alcoholic beverages. So the area that I came from was beer flowed freely in churches as well as at any events. So I speak to it from the experience of 46 years and seeing how alcoholism is rampant. And how I dealt with it for the last 46 years. Thank you. And I honor all of you that have spent time. But I appreciate it. But I'm here representing our church. God bless you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak?
I'm Johnny Fox from the Holiday Church of Christ here in Cookeville. Been there 18 years and 31 years before I was at that Sycamore congregation here in Cookeville. I was born in a log cabin near Walgreens now. And graduated from Parkview and Central High School and Tennessee Tech. So I think I know. This community and I love this community. I love taking the grandchildren to Canyon Creek Park and the. The opportunities of Dogwood Park family situations. And I know we're dealing here with public places and not city owned. I understand that. But I hope whatever measure you can use your influence. Alcohol is the worst thing that can ever happen to a family, alcohol. To become an alcoholic, the sorrow. My father, my grandfather nearly caused my mother and sisters to starve to death because he was a drunk. He was a no good drunk. That was my own grandpa. Alcohol will destroy you if you don't let it be strictly governed. And I hope and pray that it will be through this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm an old grandma. My name is Connie Bellamy. I'm from this county as a resident. I have grandchildren who shop in Cookeville, Chad, Sophie, and Ben and Annie. And the only thing I can think of to say here, and especially after Johnny Fox spoke, is. With everything that's going on in our nation, I truly think this nation is done with some of these things. I truly think that with evidencing what happened with Trump. And what's happened since then, and what's happening on the border, and what's happening in our states, and what's happening in Tennessee, and what's happening in Cookeville. I have met within the last month, people from Canada with a green card. His wife is from California. I have friends that are relocated here from Maine. They were originally from New York. I have an attorney friend who relocated here from New York. They recently brought their neighbor who relocated here from another state. All these people from other states saying to me, we came here because Cookeville was at least a place that still had values. And still acted as if they had a moral compass. And I'm saying that to say, if you truly are Christian. And it doesn't, I know we're not into, you got to dictate Christianity, and that's totally fine with me. But if you are Christian and you think about it as a city council member, voting to condone alcohol on our city streets. Where children can drink if they please, like Will Roberts, that's how he became addicted. Taking drinks from his parents' drink at a party, he may not know, he doesn't know I'm saying this. I hope it's okay with him. But I've heard so many testimonies over the last two months, it has been appalling. From methadone to alcohol, Dr. Sam Barnes is a perfect example. And all these people got addicted somehow. It may have been at some party. It may be on the streets of Cookeville. I have family members that are alcoholics, almost lost one, his sodium was so low, critical value. Lauren, do you know what that means? We almost did not save him. I never, even with the Republican Party, where I'm on the executive committee in Putnam County, anytime we have an event. We have discussed whether or not to have alcohol. Every time that's discussed, I say, I do not want to be a stumbling block. And if you are a Christian and you have read scripture, you know, it tells us, do not be a stumbling block. And if you condone alcohol as the city council, and it's okay with you that however many times per year we close our streets. Divert ambulances, the whole bit from street to ER, that's all up to you. But at least remember, if you are a child of God, Christian, try not to be a stumbling block to anyone. Including your family, maybe.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, sorry.
My name is Judy Miller, and I did not come to this meeting tonight prepared to speak or having any desire to speak, but after hearing everyone else. I need to. Most of you know me. I've gone to church with some of you, still do. Grandkids have played ball with other people's children, worked with some of you. I've got two questions. One is, how do you monitor two drinks per hour? How is that going to be done?
We normally don't address questions. We'll kind of have discussion about that. But I mean, yeah, if you want to, if you want to keep talking.
Okay.
Yeah.
But think about that. How is that going to be done? The other question is, why are we doing it? For profit? Now, are you going to sell your soul for profit? I can promise you that in my day, I could probably outdrink every one of you. But the good Lord let me live long enough. And be smart enough to know that it's not the thing to do. My family is affected by alcohol and alcoholics. Alcohol is the number one drug that is addicted. My husband and I have started a ministry at First Baptist Church approximately three years ago. Where we work with homeless and extremely low income people. When you sit down and talk to those people, and I want to ask you, how many of you have sat down and had a full conversation? With a homeless person on the side of the street? When you hear their story, 98% of them started drinking at nine, 10, 11, 12. And then it went to something else. Or either they were sexually abused at five, six, seven, eight because their father or mother or somebody's boyfriend was drunk. Now, I believe that, you know, if you want to drink at home, that's fine, but don't open our streets, please. I have two grandchildren, and Lauren, you know that. Luke, you've got two kids. Ollie. Come on, guys. Do we, tell me why we're doing it. What's the reason? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, we will close the public hearing portion for this agenda item, and then we will have council discussion.
Well, I will head to start now. I agree that I don't think the streets are appropriate. For alcohol. I would like to make, I could probably make a motion, can I make a motion? I would like to make a motion to get it out of the streets and even that city parking lot right there on Cedar Street as well. And just leave it to the confines at the town center. And the fairgrounds.
Right, Danny, you're going to have to help with this because I know we're going to be going through the, so we've got a motion to amend the ordinance. To remove the streets and to have it just for the Leslie Town Center and the fairgrounds.
Right. And the reason I'm into that is because. Those, both of those locations have to get approval from the housing authority or the county commission as well. Those are the public building authority.
We've got a motion for that. We can, so we need a second for that, and then we'll discuss that. So there's a second for that motion.
Seconds.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. So now we'll have that discussion about the streets.
Is that just the chamber and taking the parking lot out?
That's right. Taking that parking lot on Cedar out.
That's what I thought.
That contiguous parking lot.
But you're leaving the fairgrounds.
Leaving the fairgrounds and leaving the chamber and their parking lot.
Chamber and their parking lot.
Oh, we're in discussion.
Yeah, in discussion now. On the, on the amendment to remove the streets to leave it less at Town Center and the fairgrounds.
Let me get a point of clarification. We're likely to have several amendments here, Danny, so we're going to vote each individual amendment. Is that the way to do it? And then with the final version, if they could vote up or down.
That's a, that is a clean way to do it. The Robert rules allow people to make compound amendments if somebody wants to do that there. But it's, that will certainly make it a lot easier on us, keep it track.
Yes, we will.
So we'll attempt that. We'll see, we'll see how that hopefully soon.
But in that discussion. You know, I don't see, but out of that, and if I got just a second, I'd like to talk about answers to your questions. You know, I've lived in Cookeville all my life, came back from college to come live here and work here. I have seen the progress of Cookeville. I completely agree. And Cookeville is a great conservative place to live, enjoy. And I love this town. I think we have the right recipe. And that recipe comes from a balance of the culture that Tennessee Tech offers our community. That our churches, our religious organizations give to our community. And that the people in our community enjoy with one another. And my, from my point of view, what I've seen is. You know, in the 90s, as a younger person on the council and growing up in the 90s and the 2000s, going to college in the 2000s. You know, we did pass liquor by the drain. And now we have Interstate Drive, we have downtown businesses, you know, if you took away. All the restaurants that serve liquor in our city, it's going to be a long line over an all good for the all good diner. And, you know, ultimately, a lot of these places do serve it for the benefit of progress in business. And our grocery stores sell alcohol. That being said, I do not condemn the misuse and irresponsible drinking. Like, I'm totally against that. I'm not a huge drinker. I don't mind having a beer and a hot dog and watching a baseball game. I think that's perfectly okay. I love to enjoy that with my friends who want to do that. If I was to go to a baseball game with a friend who didn't drink, I'd probably not drink myself, just out of respect. And so what I've seen downtown is as Father Tom's opened up, that's one of our first downtown restaurants on the west side. As Seven Cents has opened up, the Crawdaddies, they all thrive. And they've thrived because they've also offered a downtown dining experience and the sale of liquor by the drink and out in beer. And ultimately, a lot of these events we've had, we've had these events for, gosh, I really don't know how long they've gone back. I don't know what council originally allowed it, but over 10 years, I believe, or somewhere around that at least, and just in our park. It hasn't hurt anybody. It hasn't been detrimental. When you buy a ticket to an event and you buy a beer at a baseball game, it's a $10, $15 beer. If you're irresponsibly drinking, you're going to drink at home, you're going to go somewhere cheaper, you're going to find these other avenues. And I respect that wholly that that's another issue and it's something that needs to be fought. But in our community, I feel like there's a lot of things that allow people to come together, be sociable. And it brings more people out. And I think that that's an important thing, is to get people out in the community together and being sociable. I prefer them out in the community. Mingling with other people and trying to be responsible in their community development. And I think that overall, like this ordinance and the ordinance we passed back in December, for example. It bans alcohol on Tennessee Tech property. It bans alcohol at the golf courses. It's. It's, it has a lot more ban than we've considered, and we've acted kind of harshly into jumping into this. You know, I don't know that this is the answer. I think this is, from my perspective, a change of venue. It started with the park. And if you look at it, we kind of provided a place across the street that didn't affect Main Street businesses. It allowed nonprofits and groups to go somewhere on public property, have an event, have a. A lot of, you know, is highly regulated or is responsible in alcohol present. We are moving that venue or suggesting that venue changes, and now it's changing and being argued that Main Street is the best place to do this. And now we've got a motion saying that Leslie Town Center and the fairgrounds are the only best places to do this. And so, overall, I think we should just take this back to discussion. To talk about what this looks like, try to provide something for the community that represents the organizations that want to participate in this, represent, gives people an opportunity, but doesn't disrupt the community in its event. You know, at, at the end of the day, the two times it happened, I think, in the theater Dogwood Park. It wasn't a bad thing for the community. Nobody really paid attention to it, other than maybe seeing an advertisement or two and the people who participated. You could still go to Dogwood Park, play at the playground, it didn't encompass the whole park. It wasn't right in front of you, it didn't get, it wasn't right in front of you, wanted to go to dinner that night, you wouldn't even know about it. And that was a better spot than perhaps Main Street for a lot of these events. I also know that Main Street businesses want the opportunity to expand out and have opportunities like other cities already do. Livingston is having a, a beer festival, I think, or wine festival, I'm not sure which, but they were having something in their park this year. You know, Johnson City does this, there's Franklin does this, there's all kinds of cities in our area that do this. And people, even conservative people, get attracted to these places for the social events. And these social events do bring more people if there's a little bit of alcohol, sir. Not everybody even participates, but it helps pay for a nice band or a better band. And I don't see a problem if somebody wants to responsibly come enjoy a beer and watch a concert in Dogwood Park or when that's, if we've designed it in a responsible way that the community can enjoy. But that's my perspective, and I one hundred percent appreciate the, the, the group that has worked really hard on this and put forward. They've actually put forward a lot of great rules and taken into consideration a lot of things that the city had taken into consideration and tried to define that really well. But I, I feel like if we try to narrow this down to one spot. Of having just a change of venue from the park to North Cedar. And if we'll open that up a little bit and just look at this from a broader perspective, like, is, is alcohol bad for golf tournaments at events on tech campuses? Or is it, you know, is it, is it bad for special events and on any public property? We've had the Harley or Alley come to town, we've had the Spelunkers come to town, like, different groups tend to want to be able to use it at the fairgrounds if they're going for a whole weekend. And so, this kind of applies in a lot of different ways and fashions and, and these different groups and different things that want to socially get together may use it. And I feel like as a community, we can responsibly put forward an ordinance that reflects the values of the whole community. Have, have conservative regulations, has a way to protect, to make sure that we're, this isn't, this isn't Bourbon Street, and I certainly don't want Bourbon Street on the front door of Cookville. And that we've done it in such a way that's smart and respectful and responsible, then we've done the best service to our community. And that's, that's my goal with this. I think if we narrow it so much that we've done a disservice and we will, you, you see the problem expand. You know, you see more people in bars and in home drinking, and you, you don't get that opportunity for social engagement that this brings to our community.
May I also just interject a little bit now, just for clarification, this doesn't prohibit any of those social events from going on. Those social events could still happen without the alcohol in those areas. So this is strictly for alcohol related.
Certainly, and, but, man, if, if you get a better band in, sometimes you gotta raise funds to do it or to, to enjoy the concert or, I mean, just it will bring more people out and it gets people together, and I don't, I don't see that as a bad thing. I see concerts all over Tennessee, I see baseball games and, and events that happen, and I know we're not gonna have any baseball games without, I would have a venue for that. But, but ultimately, it's just, it's not, it could be a good thing for our community to have organizational events that may serve alcohol. And I think those are two different things. You know, an alcohol event is one thing, but an event, a street fair, a craft fair, and there happens to be a VIP tent with alcohol being served, that's a totally different thing. Maybe it's a, a, a local Main Street program wants to have an event with a tent, and they have a private event and they're using the public space for it. I don't see why that could be a bad thing. You know, if it brings people into our community and helps the storefront sell more items, so dinners, so, so boutiques, so groceries and coffee. I think that that could be a really good thing, but I do think we need to put a lot more thought into how we go about that.
So, are you making a motion?
No, you've already got one on the table.
Oh, yeah, we're still just, yeah, so that was your discussion, I think, on, on the item as a whole. So we're still discussing the amendment that we have currently, which is to remove the streets and just have it for Leslie Town Center and the fairgrounds.
Yeah, and can I also, since the Leslie Town Center can already have those events and serve alcohol, this just allows it in the parking lot as well, if somebody wanted.
I think they can do it there, can't they?
Can they do it in the parking, no, they can't.
Well, they can do it in the parking lot.
Just in building, yeah.
Well.
Yeah, okay.
Point of clarity, the golf course business, I mean, doesn't our ordinance already permit that?
There are a lot of golf courses out there.
So this ordinance does not supersede that.
You can still drink at a golf.
So we did, we did want to address the issue of Tennessee Tech, yeah, and take, yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, that's another minute.
Most golf courses aren't public. Yeah, that's right. If there was, if you pass this ordinance without changing it to exempt Tennessee Tech, it would, upon passage, prevent beer at the Tennessee Tech.
Correct.
That has not been contemplated since when alcohol that on all public property. Until this is passed, the current law, as we sit here right now, is it's allowed on all golf, golf courses everywhere, including this. But if you were to pass this without exempting tech, then you would have, you would create a problem that doesn't exist today.
So that's another minute we have to discuss, but we'll keep.
Generic terms, Southern. We don't have it, there's not another one.
Um, so, yeah, we're still discussing the ordinance, removing the streets, just leaving it for Leslie Town Center and the fairgrounds. Is there any more discussion on that?
Well, I do like taking it out of the streets, and that's one reason, but, you know, when I look downtown. You know, to discuss some damages being done or anything, I, my church is downtown, my, our church has been hit by a drunk driving twice. Or, we had to pay for that, we had a, we got a, somebody that was drunk that walked down the street and kicked our window in. Coming from something, so we all paid for that, we didn't, we had to pay for that because of somebody else's due diligence and not knowing what their limit was on alcohol. And, you know, line on the west side going on all the way down through there, and we're having to do stuff at our church, we'd pick up Glad, there's a lot of things. And I even think some of the individuals, and I really appreciate everybody that was on this, but they didn't even want, they don't even want it on Broad, they even discuss how they don't want it there. And I think a lot of the businesses downtown, what I've heard, is that they don't want it in front of their doorstep. And I think we're doing really good for them because we want to keep them. I think we want to keep those businesses there because they are the ones that have made this downtown vibrant, not alcohol. They made it vibrant, every one of them, and we have six places you can drink already downtown within two hundred yards of each other. So, putting it out there on the street, I just don't think is wise on our part. And that's one reason I do support this, plus we have housing that's getting ready to come in, you're gonna have events that go on, you know, people gonna enjoy that being so loud downtown. I don't know, that's just speculation, but just something I think about. You know, when I think, I think a lot of us, we always discuss, we don't want to be like the bigger cities, we love our small town feel, we love our hometown feel, we love that family-friendly environment. And I think by doing this, we keep that, and I don't think any business is gonna be running away from downtown because they don't have alcohol on the street. I think our coffee shop's gonna stay down there for a while and, and all of our others. So, I appreciate us looking at this and looking at taking these out and putting in the place what we're deciding on right now, so I do appreciate that.
With all due respect, we've prospered for a decade allowing these things. So I don't understand, like, our recipe has been to allow these things. We're taking it away from our recipe, we're pulling it out of our recipe. And, and that's what we're, that's what we did in December, and that's what we're doing now. And so it's not an argument whether we're gonna allow, whether we're gonna put a little extra spice in the recipe, it's part of Cookville's history in the last decade. And so I think that's something that needs to be acknowledged, that we're changing it, we're, we're definitely changing our recipe for progress. And we have good progress in Cookville.
Do we, how many of these events happened in the last five years downtown?
Well, I'm gonna clarify a little bit here about why there's streets included in this, because we've never had it unless the city sponsored, and we didn't say what street where. But if you remember when we, the council adopted the previous ordinance, we had a couple of the businesses in the downtown in this area come and were extremely upset that what we were doing was gonna take away with their event. Well, their events were never legal. You could never have alcohol in the street unless the city sponsored it. And we only sponsored one event ever, and that was on for the city skate, line on the west side, that's the only time I remember on a city street. Well, that's why we, this committee, and all of them, this is where the events that had alcohol, albeit not in compliance with any code, but this is where they occurred. And that's why they started with this, and this narrowed down quite a bit, we looked at a much larger area. And I'm not advocating for having the streets, I'm trying to explain why it was here. But there's been numerous events here, Council boss, you don't answer, but they've never been approved and in compliance with the municipal code. Now, the only ones that have been, and Darren, you cut me off, I'm wrong, on the street, now we've had, as Councilman Walker said, we've had several events in the park, that's no longer an option, and we've had events at the fairgrounds, which would stay in this ordinance, and then we've also had Broad closed on several occasions to have events with alcohol. But those, that's the only time I know of that the city's approved an event on a public street.
So, so the, on that, the change of venue that I'm describing is because we took it away in the park and we opened up a new place for it to be allowed. The groups that were previously doing it in the park now are going to be doing it on the street, and it's not motivated from a business perspective, it's motivated by this is the only venue that we're allowing. And so, that's, that's probably one of the biggest dilemmas in our ordinance that I see, is that we, we're, we're not taking care to consider the businesses on Main Street, and we kind of created a change of venue for for these organizations that aren't business sponsored. And I think we've had discussion and we understand that we could put language in this ordinance that requires a business to sponsor an event, or requires an event to have business sponsorship, and that would be legal. And that, I think that would be really important before you ever close a street in front of a business, I think, I'm gonna protect the businesses downtown. I think that they should have a say before the street gets closed in front of them, and I've, I've got experience with that, and I think that that's an important thing. If, if, if alcohol's involved or really anything. But, you know, the business ought to have a say, but, and, and you can't make them vote, you can't, but like, if one business is to sponsor something, they're putting themselves out there, and the other businesses are gonna listen, and it's a community, the business community is just like a neighborhood community. And everybody's respectful, and we are moving that venue from the park to downtown. And I feel like we had a good situation for the last ten years, we've had a good situation where alcohol, small events could happen, nobody was abusing it. And we, as a coun, well, not we, but part of this council has initiated things that outlaw, that make it not possible to do. And we continue to go down that path, and we really need to rethink it. And that's my argument too.
So we'll say, you know, just for clarification as well, we can, this, this ordinance is amendable, we can change it. You know, once we adopt it, we can change it a little bit between first and second reading, so there is a possibility to have some more discussion. I do feel like we do need to move forward in some fashion with the ordinance. You know, we did take away something, so trying to find a way to provide it. So, but there is the possibility to still have discussion about other options.
Can I also make another comment? This ordinance, even though in my the post amendment. This ordinance does give limitations and restrictions and things like that, and certain requirements, you know, as far as security, the insurance, all that stuff still applies.
Yeah.
And also the drink limitation also applies.
So we're still on the table, the amendment, yeah.
Uh, just to, just to chime in, I, I'm not, I, I like a bolting down of the matter at hand, the matter at hand, to me, is we are, we are contemplating the city extending a footprint. Some parks, or some, I'm sorry, some fairgrounds, some parking lot, and some street to nonprofits to enable, and I guess potentially increase their fundraising initiative. And that's, I, I think, is, is that not, that's not the task, is that the task at hand, bow down? And that's, and, and all the other rhetoric about the, the events and, and the things that are taking away and the things that have, have been lost, that's, that's not what we're solving for right now. Right now, we're solving for, do we want to extend? And what kind of footprint does it need to look like that we want to extend to these nonprofits to enable them to fundraise for whatever, whatever initiative they bring to the table? And, and just to wrap up my comments, I know there's been a lot said, so I'll try and be brief, but the, the opening up the streets for it is, they, they can already do that in the streets. Giving them that, that extra, I don't know, for whatever reason they think they needed, the horsepower to, to raise more money, I'm just, I'm not comfortable with that. The, the prevailing laws against open containers seem to be the, the wisdom of the day that says, hey, we just prevailing opinion is we, we're not comfortable with that, and I, I tend to lean that way.
I'm glad, yeah, you pointed out, street closures are still allowed.
Right.
Um, yeah, that is something that's still allowed, just not with alcohol, that is illegal.
They can still have the event, the band, they can still have everything that wants to be a, a social draw.
Correct. Just not with, yeah.
Not with that.
Well, I just think, but if they're doing the event, I think they're paying for the ticket anyway, so it doesn't matter if they have beer or not, it's gonna, if they want to charge fifty dollars, you can, they can charge fifty dollars to get in.
Knock themselves out.
Yeah, and they can raise all the money they want, because they don't get to pay for extra beer.
Well, no, they won't have any way to fundraise because the sidewalks have to remain open. So it's not a ticket event, you know?
Either way, they're gonna.
We don't, I mean, at, at the end of the day, we've closed the door on events that are gonna have alcohol, we did that in December.
No, we don't, we're contemplating right now, leaving them in the parking lot, the fairgrounds, and probably gonna ride around tech.
Well, I mean, to, to, you, you said the prevailing thought, I mean, most, a lot of places in Tennessee.
I said the prevailing law, the open container law, I don't, if I'm misspeaking, I don't need to practice law, but Danny, is that the prevailing law of?
Well, it's our law, yeah. There's no open.
In PCA, those are the prevailing laws. And that's all I said.
Well, it's a city ordinance, but you've been to that too.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, there's, there's cities that do, do this in Tennessee, and they, they do it for economic prosperity, they do it, the chambers sponsor it, the tourism board sponsors it. It is, it is to bring larger events and more people into your area for economic downtown Main Street prosperity.
I can't, I don't think any of us can speak to their motives, and none of us have their economic models.
They're on their website.
There are cities that do things that we don't do, and there we do things that we, that we do that they don't do, I don't know that their template is exactly what we need to follow to the letter.
Sure, but we're taking this away from our city. We did in December.
We are, we are approving a dysfunctional ordinance that we had that was not administratable at this city hall, and we, we confirmed that the last time we voted, we needed to undo that ordinance. Our lawyers could confirm that.
No, I, I don't, I don't think that was the argument.
The problem with the prior ordinance with the parks was that it was placing the city staff in a position where the city staff was determining who gets to have alcohol and who doesn't. And that's an impossible position.
That's right.
You're, that's dysfunctional.
So we wanted to take that responsibility away from the city.
Functionality, and that's what we did, we didn't strike out to start prohibition and take stuff away, we took away a dysfunctional ordinance that they could not administer.
And so, right now on the table, we have an ordinance, removing, with amended, to remove the streets to leave the Leslie Town Center park, you, you want to remove the parking lot?
I do want to remove the parking lot on Cedar Street.
And the reasoning?
Because just keep it at the Leslie Town Center parking lot.
Okay, and the fairgrounds, okay.
Because if you do it right there on the street, I mean, chances are, it's gonna spill over on Cedar.
So I have a question, does that mean the Leslie Town Center is gonna have to start hiring security for other events?
No, because the nonprofits, yeah, they're the ones that.
The fundraiser, well, that's, that's, that's their decision to make.
They hired anybody, I mean.
We have a representative here from them.
Would you like to speak?
If I could, or can I just? It is, yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, the public hearing portion is closed, yeah.
Well, we can, I mean, we can allow them to talk.
Mayor.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, there's a question, I mean, yes, I'm, I'm fine with this, but yeah.
Facility director for the Leslie Town Center, I would, I have some questions if it's gonna be pertaining to our facility. Can I ask those or am I not?
I mean, yeah, we're having discussions, so yeah, I'm fine with you asking them.
Okay, so it, it continues in our parking lot.
Okay, I'm quoting, yes.
So if the ordinance would be for our parking lot, are we having to follow those ordinance? Cause we already have rules and regulations for inside the facility that do not meet the same requirements of what you guys have for the outside.
Correct.
So would our inside rules apply?
Which are a stricter.
Or would we not as a public building authority with our own board of directors be able to create those or those rules and regulations for our own parking lot as we have for the inside?
And not, no, this, whichever stricter will control the parking lot.
But not the inside of the building?
The inside of the building is.
It's a separate entity.
So if the, if the, if Eric's nonprofit wants to book the inside of the facility, but whatever, I'm just saying. If someone's nonprofit. Right, right, whatever. But if someone's nonprofit wants to book the inside of the facility as well as the parking lot for alcohol, we have different guidelines and restrictions for security for both. So now what, what am I telling the client that they're having to follow?
They have to follow the most restrictive guidelines as long as they're in the parking. If they go outside the building and they've got open container outside, they've gotta follow the most, um, superior restriction.
And you, you guys still hold the power to whether they're approved or not approved too.
You don't have to let someone be in your parking.
The public building authority, the way this is drafted, has that authority, which is appointed by the council.
Appreciate, appreciate, you, you don't have it now.
Right, right, but I'm saying is if you add it.
Or do you not?
I mean, I wouldn't. I, I would like, I would like our board to be able to make that decision if it's gonna pertain to our facility.
Will be, yeah, it's up to you. We're just, we're just saying the use is, is permitted in this contemplation.
Right, but.
Right, right now, right now, your board cannot have an event in the parking lot that has alcohol.
Correct.
You don't have to do it if this passes with or without.
So regardless of the ordinance is there or not, as our public building authority, we have the right to say we are not gonna allow alcohol in our parking lot.
Yes, that's correct.
If you choose to allow alcohol in your parking lot, then you have to meet these restrictions.
Okay, but as our own entity, I mean, obviously the city council appoints, approves that our board. But as our own, we get the regulations.
Time was live for the fairground. Would have the decision, they would have the authority to decide. They say no, then there would be no events there.
What about Tennessee Tech?
That'll be a new, that'll be another.
Tennessee Tech is something that you'd want to.
Explain.
If you're gonna say this ordinance, you need to exclude Tennessee Tech from the definition of public property. So that Tennessee Tech has the authority to regulate what goes themselves.
So I would like to say, has everyone, did everyone's like they're comfortable enough to vote on the amendment to remove the streets, to leave it less the town center and the fairgrounds? And then we will have another amendment to discuss Tennessee Tech. Yeah, yeah, we're, we're gonna do both one minute here, so.
Real, real quick, before we, I hate to beat a dead horse here. And I know that this is unlikely to sway anyone. But why are, in general, Chad commented earlier about this is for nonprofit. Why are we promoting nonprofits over our local businesses? Like if a local business wants to partner with a nonprofit and they wanna choose the nonprofit, why wouldn't we support them to try to make that event work?
Well, I think that's a discussion we can have down the road if there is a business that wants to have.
There is, there's several that came to us in December.
And so, yeah, and if they want to have that, that's a discussion that we can have where they say, yes, I, I wanna have this road approved for alcohol. We can go back and add that road in, am I correct?
Well, they do now, I mean, they want this, they totally close these roads.
They weren't. Yeah, but if that business may not be there in 10 years, and then now you've got this outlier.
Okay, I just wanted to address why we prioritize the nonprofits over the local businesses, in my opinion.
I think we're just trying, uh, my understanding is we're trying to find a way for, for everyone to have an event at, at some point. Nonprofits that have alcohol and nonprofits that don't have alcohol.
And in brief, just the gent's word load was, was started discussing nonprofits. We're not prioritizing one or the other, we're addressing the matter at hand.
Okay.
So is everyone comfortable?
And so for businesses to be able to sell liquor in the streets is very complicated. It's not a matter of the council saying, hey, you can do this. Uh, state law comes in, so there are issues with just trying, just saying, hey, businesses can go out in the street and serve alcohol.
Well, I, I just, I bring that up because I, when we first discussed this in December, there was discussion about local groups coming together and trying to sponsor something that let, allows businesses to bring tables into the street or have a, have a restaurant night where there's additional tables or promote those things. And you see these things in other cities. And I think when we discussed this prior, there was sympathy for that. And I think that, that right now, there's no.
I think there was discussed, but when, when the charge to the committee was brought to us that we approved, that was not in it. So we, we tried to dial in and focus them on the nonprofits and that's what they have.
And that is a whole, yeah, that is a whole separate issue because that would have to be a, a change in, in city ordinance to allow alcohol in the streets from private businesses, correct?
You could change that in this ordinance if you wanted to, but the reason nonprofits were.
Yeah, it's because nonprofits are having events in the park.
You took that away for the reasons that I think were legitimate. But now your committee has come up with a plan to allow these nonprofits to have these events somewhere. And then the question is, where is that somewhere? Is it in the streets? Is it in the parking lot? Is it the town center? Is it the fairgrounds? Is it somewhere else?
And I would say that if businesses do come to us and say, we wanna have these events in the street, we can come back and have that discussion, correct? And amend the ordinance again, if that's, if that's an issue that we see really depressing, correct? Let's not do that right now. Um, all right, so we've got the amendment on the table to remove the streets, have it Leslie Town Center, fairgrounds. And that's the only amendment right now, yes. Is everyone comfortable? Do you all have, you had enough discussion to?
Where did it go?
Now, we don't even know what's going on.
Darren's ready for you to vote.
Yeah. So are y'all comfortable with voting on this amendment?
We got, we got a motion back.
Yeah, then we're gonna come back to discuss tech. The only amendment we're voting on is to remove the streets, keep it less the town center, fairgrounds, that's it.
I have no further discussion.
Okay, then I'm gonna go ahead and call for a vote on this amendment to remove the streets, keep it at Leslie Town Center and the fairgrounds for the only public property that alcohol can be allowed for nonprofits. Everybody ready? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. Or yes, motion carries.
Okay, now we do, I, I would like to, to entertain a motion to exclude Tennessee Tech from this amendment. Um, they're a university, I would like them to be able to govern themselves. Um, so take Tennessee Tech out of the ordinance and exclude any Tennessee Tech property.
Suggest that you add.
In the foundation, yeah.
Page 501 that says that, um.
Uh, what do we say? Tennessee Tech or the foundation property. Okay, so yeah, I'll entertain a motion to, um, add that sentence to remove Tennessee Tech and foundation property from this ordinance.
I'll second that.
Okay, and a motion and a second, any discussion on that? Thing done, we'll go ahead and vote on that then. So our second amendment is to remove Tennessee Tech property and the foundation property from this ordinance.
So that they can regulate.
Regulate themselves subject to the existing laws of the city of Cookeville. So this ordinance will not change the laws that apply to them today.
Yes.
That's what your, that's what your amendment are already doing.
Did you get all that?
Yeah.
Darren? Yeah, okay.
Trying to accomplish a no change to them.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
All votes correct. IBS motion carries.
Okay, are there any other amendments that anyone would like to discuss for this ordinance? I know we'd added in certain things about the, um, age, security, the number of drinks and things like that. Is there anything else anyone would like to add to this amendment before we vote on it as a whole with these two amendments? And I do.
Yeah, I would love to make a motion to actually expand the area to allow the park as well. Um, just but the upper area of the park in the vicinity of the amphitheater.
And in order, it, and Danny, correct. Correct me if I'm wrong, that would open the city back up though to have to.
No, this would open it up to all nonprofits.
It would, it would open the city back up to being responsible for.
No, there's a new law.
No, so we removed, in December, the council removed the requirement that the city sponsor or approve the things that are going on in the park and make that determination. So right now, they're not allowed in the park. The amendment that I'm hearing what Walker proposed is that they will be just like the county, uh, the fairgrounds and any nonprofit that meets these rules with this security with these restrictions would then be able to have their event without the problematic city approval or disapproval in the section of the park that he's described.
Yeah, and we can more define that on a map, but just the upper area where the, where the amphitheater is around the concessions and, and right behind the museum. Upper elevations of the park and amphitheater.
I'm not.
He's gonna motion, I'll, I'll second it to go ahead and have the discussion.
I, I just think that the limits are too nebulous and that park is, is, is too, is not big enough to accommodate the, the, the spirit of the, of the family that it's to support as well as those type of events, it just.
I agree, I agree. I think it's just creating similar problems that we had for, even though we didn't have to approve or anything. But you still got the public passageway, there's still barrier issues. You know, you can still have people walk freely through there. It's just logistically, I think it's very difficult.
Well, I, I don't manage.
Okay, if you have it in just a portion of the park, you have to delineate so that members of the public know where they can have alcohol and where they, what, what you had before were proved wanted to restrict that restricted access to the.
Keep gathering.
To the section, you can have restricted access, but as long as it's clearly marked, you know, with orange paint or signs, no alcohol beyond this point, kind of things that you see. Like you can do that and I don't think it creates any of the issues that we had before. You know, we wanna prep that language carefully and, um, obviously you have a chance to consider that if it were passed on second reading. But, um, you could, you could allow it to be in the parks and eliminate the issues of barriers and restrictions and eliminate the issues of the city. Um, having to pick who gets to it, who doesn't get to, for the problems that.
So we would not, cause my understanding previously was we'd have to mark it up with like a permanent, um.
You could do that and make it, so you could paint orange paint on the ground and put a little bit, um. But you guys have to make it clear to the public where they can.
But that doesn't have to be a permanent structure that, that one eggs.
The captain of fence or a barricade up, that's one of the things that we got into was that the organizations were wanting to just do that so you'd have that. And there were other, other events where we had issues with that and that was.
And you cannot do that, cannot refer people in the park. You can't, if you want, we talked about a way to do it where you remove the amphitheater from the park, have it be a separate private facility. But I don't think there was an appetite to do that by the Parks and Recreation Department because they, um, like to have events that spill out into the park as well. Um, and you didn't, there was no appetite to do that. So you go back to, if you're gonna have an event in an area of the park that could spill out under this, you'd have to delineate the area where alcohol can be consumed in a fashion that does not restrict access to any portion of the park, anyone.
So everyone would just have a choice on whether they wanna.
It would, but, but some of the issues we've had in the past, the very issue we've had in the past are when people get nose to nose. And I can only imagine the painted line, creating that atmosphere again with, and you cannot predict who's gonna wanna use this space and who's not. And, and who's gonna object to the other party and I, I just.
And so why are we looking at confrontation on the front door of the Leslie Town Center?
We're not, it's up to them.
It's up to them.
And I don't think they will do it.
They can decide that.
We just gave.
So we're effectively taking.
We just gave them a use of, of their property.
Yeah, the Leslie Town Center is not park.
Yeah.
So we're just effectively taking this out, other than the fairgrounds. Luke, your comment was that the Leslie Town Center won't do it anyway.
So the way she made it sound is they didn't want any part of that. And let they do it inside.
But their park, the park is open to all, all the time. You can't restrict who gets to come in and out of the park. And plus the town center is a facility that you can restrict who gets to use it. And so some group can exclusively rent the town center.
And that's what's.
Cannot exclusively rent the park.
And that's what's good about venues like Delmonico, Run, Winery, all those venues, they can exclude kinda who. So that's really good, where they can have these events.
And in this, in this, or, or in the, in the, in the, uh, spirit of consistency, are they not publicly owned just like tech? And rather than us overlord them, we said, you know what, you can, you can decide your own fate in that regard. But were we on the other things, but this ordinance was gonna reach and grab them by inference or, or well indirectly or not in my intention. And we said, hey, no, we'll carve you out, you make your own way.
Well, they, they are subject to the same discrimination issues that we are, they're a public building authority.
It's the, the issue wasn't discrimination necessarily, it was explicit use. So groups wanted exclusive use of the park or some section of the park. And the, and in parks and sidewalks, you cannot permit that. But they're what are called official public for it and they are open to all. And facilities like CPAC or the Leslie Town Center, those can be closed and exclusively used with restricted access by groups. You can't discriminate against who can do it. You can't say this group can't use the Leslie Town Center because we don't like them. You, they still have a right to rent it, but they can, when they rent it, use it exclusively.
So what happens if the bike trail that goes through?
The bike trail that goes through what?
The Leslie Town Center parking lot.
I don't know what that is.
So we, our, our bike trail goes to Leslie Town Center parking lot.
Okay.
Is that another complexity?
Let's move that, let's move that green line, so I heard they're looking for.
Eric, I will agree, I would like to see us have further discussion about some other possible areas that we can do, I would like to. I don't think we have that answer right now. I think what we have on the table is what we got. Is it the best ordinance? I, I, I don't know, I think it is better than what we had previously. Um, I think it's a good starting point and I do think that we have an obligation to go ahead and vote on this because the committee did do such a good job of providing so much time and dedication to us um, that we did wanna go ahead and get something on the books. That there was a nonprofit that wanted to have something, they could. Um, but I, I would like to see further discussion about some other areas. I don't know if that's, if we can solve that tonight.
Well, made a motion. I'll, I'll call the vote, I'll, I'll make a point.
The motion was to, no, we already did tech, we already did this, the motion to add the park.
Motion in a second to amend it and add the park, or a normal portion of the park.
So if there are no more discussion on that, we can go ahead, is there any more discussion? We can go ahead and vote on the new amendment, which is to include the park.
No, the upper area.
The upper area of the park.
Upper vicinity only.
All votes correct. Three no, motion fails.
So we'll go back to the original amended ordinance, which is removal of streets, just have it less the town center, have it the fairground and remove Tennessee Tech property in the foundation. Any more amendments that y'all would like to add?
I would like to discuss one, I think since we're, everybody, we're all discussing here. You know, one thing we do, we still do city events at the park, right? We're still doing things, so with that, a couple of things here I have is we don't take it that, we don't sell them. It's bring your own and no one governs that. And that's a little concerning to me that we do that. So there's a couple of amendments, and I've got four here I'd like to kinda throw out, we can discuss. You want me to do one at a time or we give you all four at once? We do all four, so that way everybody can hear what they are and that way. So Title H, Chapter Four, Section Eight, Four, Two, Two is hereby amended by the leading in the last sentence, the following wording. And then the city of Cookeville conceived and produced events at the performance of the public park. Second one I'd like to look at is Title Eleven, Chapter Six, Section Eleven dash six oh one is hereby amended by the leading. In the first sentence, the following wording and as city of Cookeville conceived and produced events at the performance of the public park. Title eleven, Chapter Six is hereby amended by the leading, Section Eleven dash six oh two in its entirety. And then the last one would be Title Sixteen, as your solo section sixteen, seven, three, five is hereby amended by the leading. First sentence, the following wording, except in Dogwood Park or a specific city of Cookeville conceived and produced event where the city has issued a special event permit for its own event by believing in its entirety. The second sentence, basically, I would like to see us get out of the business of allowing certain alcohol in the park as a city. That's a lot.
So is that a motion?
So how does that pertain to this ordinance? Can somebody?
Can we?
Is it part of this ordinance?
It's in it right here. Eight dash five oh one, is that what you're talking about?
Well, there was a lot of.
I know, I'm starting, I'm, I'm, I'm still on eight dash five oh one.
I don't believe the language, but, um.
It means the wording of the ordinance to make it an effect to be no occasion for alcohol consumption in Dogwood Park, whether it's city conceived or anything, is what that, what I believe.
Yes.
Councilman Eldridge's motion is intended to do. And those are the specific sections of the municipal code that specifically allow, uh, events that the city produces and conceives, which are the two or three concerts we put on that people can currently and have, have, I think from the start of the park, been allowed to BYOB or BY their. That people can currently and have, have, I think from the start of the park, been allowed to BYOB or BY their wine, whatever, their wine with them. Because we've never, Mr. Woods, we've done, we've never sold alcohol as a city, we've never served alcohol as a city. All the ordinance ever did was allow people to bring theirs cooler with them. Uh, but this would remove that, is what I believe, uh, Councilman, is your intent here, correct?
Yeah, so you're adding a section to this that, um, affects other sections of the municipal code and modifies them, is that what you're saying? Yeah, then I, yeah, that's not a problem, if you want to.
So we have, so we have that motion, okay, do we have a second?
I'll second your discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, that's a lot, um, to unpack, I don't know quite what it affects. Um, but obviously, I think we should probably. Bring all of this back to discussion between the council and try to find a way to, and could we try to talk about these issues instead of mending them one at a time and clause by clause to up the contract?
I do think that is a lot, a lot more discussion to have, and like I've said with Eric about discussing other areas do have it. Uh, I think that's a whole separate issue that. At this time, I'll, I'll, I'm not comfortable voting on, um, so. Anyone else on that? So we have a motion in a second. To, yeah, so we'll have to take a vote on that. The, the, the vote will be to. Remove to.
I think he's got it on paper.
Make the changes.
Make the changes that, that, yeah, that Vice Elder said, yeah.
They go for these changes.
Is there a way to, to suspend it, that, so that it can be thought and contemplated?
You can make the same motion on second reading of the ordinance test, it's free. Can't suspend it today without suspending the.
The entire, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, because he's going to add that to the entire ordinance here, yeah, sorry.
Second reading.
Everybody understand what this does?
Yeah, so this, yeah, this takes alcohol away completely from, from the city events.
That's right, in, in Dogwood Park.
In Dogwood Park, yeah.
And that's the only time right now you can have the consumption of alcohol in Dogwood Park or the. I don't know how many events we have, Rick, but it's not very many where you can do this.
And events that we've never had any problems with, any issues with, correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
That you're aware of, yeah. Um, so like I said, I'm, I'm not.
Would this include CPAC as well?
No, it does not, CPAC separate into, separate suing.
So. Yeah, if, if there's more discussion, please let it, let it happen.
So you got the eight five oh one, we're removing, what were those other things that you were?
We got, you got Title eight, Chapter four, eight, four, twenty-two, and a lot of this is.
Oh, I don't have.
Yeah, we don't have, yeah, I, yeah, we don't have that mark, yeah.
I felt like I was back in college. What are you talking about?
Look at chapter one.
Not in my book.
These are just some things, I, I, I don't know, I just see Dogwood Park as more family oriented, and I understand nothing's ever happened, but. We don't govern anything over, we don't monitor, bring your own, we don't monitor those things, do we, Rick?
Uh, monitor in what way?
Somebody there watching, making sure, no, I mean, we don't monitor.
No, it's, it's, it's allowed if you have a.
The police officers on, sorry.
During a city sponsored or city, excuse me, city conceived and produced event. But we don't check people, we don't look to see.
Check ID, go do nothing like that.
No, it's bring your own, nobody.
That goes back to.
Fundamental difference between bringing something and serving something.
That goes back to what the gentleman at the very beginning was talking about, about twenty-one, and we don't even check that.
But, but the city is not providing the alcohol, this is.
Sure, but still.
Of their own.
I know.
I'm, I'm seeing the wisdom in, 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 in talking about, hey, I mean, we've got these other things and, you know, what is the security? What are these, all these things that we've never really contemplated, but then I'm, without that. Liberation moment, I'm trying to think, well, hey, am I, am I qualified to vote on that right now?
So we can, we can do, yeah, we can do our research and at the next reading, if that's, if that's something you want to, you know, discuss and talk.
Withdraw.
Can you withdraw as an amendment? Yeah.
So second, agree.
Yeah, it's up, if you want to withdraw.
Yeah, we won't have more discussion, I'm totally fine with having more discussion on it, I just want to throw that out there, just so.
I mean, I, I think it's a, a wise thing to think about all this.
I, I think the only thing I'd like to discuss and add to it is, I don't know why we want to continue to punish responsible people. For things that could be responsible actions, and, and I think that that's an important part of all this, is responsible people can come. Maybe have half a bottle of wine, watch Shakespeare in the Park, but. We're going to punish them because we think it could be that an irresponsible person.
That's an interesting concept, but, but just as equally, Rick does not have a responsibility meter when he allows and sends out invitations that for people to have to walk through that and, and, and score high enough to be considered responsible, so. It's just a contemplation right now, I, I say we call for a vote on the big one if, if Councilman Eldridge is ready to withdraw.
Yeah, I, I can do that, and we're talking about responsibility, wine on the west side was responsible, but we had a lot of issues downtown. And it was good a little bit.
It's a lot of concern.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with, I, I'm fine as a second, I say.
We got a motion in a second to withdraw that amendment, so we'll go ahead and vote on the.
Withdraw.
Withdraw, we, we voted on that, right? What do we have to?
No, they've no withdrawal.
Okay, we don't have to vote on that, okay, so now we're back to. Yes, now we're back to the main ordinance with the removal, this removal of the streets for Leslie Town Center and the fairground. And removal of Tennessee Tech and foundation properties. Are there any more amendments that y'all would like to add to this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, then I will go ahead and call for a vote on the ordinance as amended, as I have stated, correct?
The last discussion I'll just make is that, I, I have trouble voting for something that has so many complexities and. That hasn't been fully discussed yet, I strongly feel that we should.
I call the vote, let's vote.
Well, in the middle of it, I need all the legal advice from the council to make a motion.
You call him for a vote, because you've got to make a motion to, um. Call for a vote, and that requires a two-thirds majority, so you can do that.
Okay, I call for a motion to disable this until our next work session. So that we can discuss this more thoroughly and proceed with a, a better ordinance, because we have found a lot of flaws.
I think that technically the motion is motion to postpone to a specific date, is what you're doing.
Yes, postpone, postpone, okay, I make a motion to postpone this until the next council meeting. And it gives us an opportunity to check our work.
Is there anyone who would like, yeah, pause a second, so anyone who wants a second? Okay, seeing none, that motion fails, so we're back to the original voting on the ordinance as amended. With lots of further discussion, it sounds like, which we can do.
If you want to have additional discussions, if the discussion's exhausted or someone wants to move, move to terminate discussion, then you can move straight to a vote.
Um, yes, I'm moving to a vote, I think we've had enough discussion, I'm moving to a vote.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the ordinance as amended.
All votes correct? Or yes, motion carries?
Thank you, that was a great lesson in Robert's rules and amendments and motions, so thank you for that. Yes, yeah, glad you were here. Um, so that is, that closes the agenda portion of this meeting. We do need to receive a report of the city manager's evaluation from the city attorney, so Mr. Rader, if you wouldn't mind. Wouldn't mind presenting that evaluation.
Uh, pleased to do it, um, mayor and council, um, so as you all know, and as you've done before. The city council evaluates the city manager, um, the city council does that in a fashion where it's anonymous so that, um, you can get scores. Uh, that, um, no one feels like it's clouded, it's, um, grown all firm, it's done the same way, uh, as it's been done here at the city for many years, at the Board of Education for many years. Uh, pleased to report to you tonight that the city manager's evaluation is complete. Um, his score was four point eight eight out of five point oh. Uh, by any measure, that is an excellent score, it is virtually identical to his score of last year. Um, highlight for you all that, um, had a, a very high score on business and finance of four point nine five. Leadership in the city of four point nine four, and its relationship with the council of four point nine oh. Um, and those are all, uh, excellent scores, um, and I'm pleased to be able to report that to you all.
Thank you, I will accept that report, and I'll also entertain a motion to, um, show our appreciation and how much. Dedication and time that Mr. Mills puts into his job, um, by. Taking that evaluation and giving Mr. Mills a fifteen percent, um, salary increase to, to, yes. Second and third, uh, and fourth and a fifth. Ali's not agreeing to that actually, so you just got to. There's a motion in a second, uh, the discussion, obviously, uh, Mr. Mills. Could not do this job without you, uh, you are invaluable, um, you know, I'd pay you out of my pockets if I could, uh, but you are, yeah, there you go. Um, what you do for us is, is why we are such a great city and city council and departments, so thank you for what you do. Uh, we appreciate it, day in and day out, you don't get enough credit.
Appreciate the great time words.
Uh, James, I, I just want to say, I think it's worth stating that you've put the employees first ever since you've been put in this position for years now. Um, any, any kind of, uh, benefit like this is long overdue and, and well deserved.
I'd like to add too, that, you know, you know, because of that, you know, you ensured that our employees, uh, city, city staff. Uh, were compensated and, you know, this really helps bring you really to market level.
Mm-hmm, good point. Man.
I agree with Lauren, you make us great.
It's a pleasure, I really enjoy working with you guys, you're a great council, I know it's not easy doing what you do, believe me. It's very much appreciated, I know the city very much appreciates each of you, but, uh, thank y'all very much for all you do.
We do need to vote to accept the report and for the, um, increase, so we've got a motion in a second, we'll go and take a vote on that.
All votes correct?
Everybody should vote yellow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
IVS motion carries.
Thank you.
I did have one other thing, if I could report, I meant to mention this earlier, but we did, uh, receive additional, uh, distribution on opioid funds. Um, today, uh, to an additional sixty-four thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. And per our, uh, memorandum of understanding with the Kookville Regional Medical Center, these funds will be appropriated to them for their addiction navigations, uh, navigator service. The thing I wanted to point out, this brings the total that the city has contributed to Kookville Regional Medical Center through the opioid distribution funds is four hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents, so. We're hoping that does a lot of benefit because we know how serious and concerning the opioid, opioid, that's hard to pronounce.
It's even harder to spell. Thank you, any other comments from the council? All right, the meeting is adjourned.